Milton is absent, Palermo is absent. Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Begley.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. This week is National Nurses Week, so...
I want to give a big shout out to all the nurses out there that provide care for us, including my sister-in-law Margaret. My niece Natalie is graduating from Creighton Nursing School this week. And my coworker's daughter Jessie Ripley. And all the nurses out there. The theme of 2023 Nurses Week is Nurses Make a Difference Anytime, Anywhere, Always. So if you have a loved one that's a nurse, be sure to be grateful and thank them as I know you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today to testify on our many items. I would encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. We have one presentation today, but before we do, I just wanted to make a note. We had a loss to the City of Omaha family this week. We were notified by the Parks Department that our longtime manager of park maintenance in the Parks Department, Jerry Flood, passed away this week. He retired in 2005, I think was currently living in Colorado, but we wanted to make that note and definitely comment on his public service to the city and the citizens and let his family know we're thinking about him. Thank you. Mr. Begley.
I have a proclamation today to read. Whereas Fred Astaire was born May 10th, 1899, in Omaha, Nebraska, first performing with his older sister in Vaville and Broadway. And whereas after landing a role in the 1933 film Dancing Lady, Astaire was signed with RKO Radio Pictures, beginning a successful 76-year career in stage, film, and television with the biggest names of the day, including Ginger Rogers and Bing Crosby. And whereas Astaire's dance routines borrowed elements from tap, ballroom, and ballet and revolutionized the way dance sequences in movies were filmed. And whereas Astaire received an honorary Academy Award in 1950, won five Emmys for his work in television, lent his voice to several animated children's TV specials, and received a lifetime achievement award in 1981 from the American Film Institute. And whereas Astaire was a devout family man, married to Phyllis Baker Potter in 1933 until her death in 1954, and then to Robin Smith in 1980, and had two children, Fred Jr. and Ava, before passing away from pneumonia at the age of 88 in 1987. And whereas, 1880, house purchase, the Astaire home located on South 10th Street in 2022 with the goal of restoration and preservation of this historic landmark. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Omaha officially designates May 10th, 2023, Fred Astaire Day in Omaha, Nebraska. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and cause the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this ninth day of May, 2023. And I have a real quick note from the step-grandson of Mr. Astaire to members of the City of Omaha City Council, on behalf of my mother, Ava Astaire McKenzie. We would like to express our appreciation for this important proclamation declaring May 10th it's Fred Astaire Day. And I have this for Mr. Ron Hug that did a lot of work on this. We appreciate your efforts. And I'll hand you this, but I didn't know if Council President Fesserson was going to show some dance moves of Fred Astaire. We can wait for that, or I can give you this, so thanks, Ron.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
While I'm stretching out, Ron, if you want to have some remarks, you're welcome.
Other than saying thank you for the consideration and your time, I really appreciate it. Fred Astaire was world famous, and for his humble beginnings from Omaha puts us on the map. So thank you all again. I appreciate it.
Mr. Harding.
Ron and I were talking a little bit beforehand, and I said I didn't know you were such a Fred Astaire fan, but it's more your love for, I think, film and the actors and actresses that have come out of Omaha and have Omaha ties. And he kind of went through a list of them. Maybe if you could name a few of them.
Oh, absolutely. Marlon Brando, Nick Nolte, Montgomery Cliff, Dorothy McGuire. And whenever I'm around...
Fonda.
Henry Fonda. Well, Henry Fonda wasn't born here, but he lived here.
We'll claim him, though.
Yeah, we'll claim him. He lived here long enough to say he's from here. And there's many, many others, but from the golden era of film, those would be the highlights. But whenever I'm around other film buffs, I always try to stump them. And I try to make a bar bet with them. I'm going to bet you a beer if you can answer this question. And the question is, who gave Henry Fonda his first formal acting lessons? Nobody knows?
No.
Marlon Brando's mother.
That's interesting.
So I guarantee you can win a beer every time with that one.
Also, I'm going to task you with something, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Because of that list. And I'm going to throw someone more contemporary like Alexander Payne. It would be interesting to know how many Oscars are affiliated with the acting tree, if you will, from Omaha. That'll be another bar bet, right?
I won't say I'm personal friends with Mr. Payne, but he does know me. And that would be a very good research project, and I think I know somebody who could probably work on that the next couple of weeks. And I could report back to you, or all of you. And, but yeah, that's interesting because there's writers. There was a...
I just said like Don Beasley, too. We forgot to mention Don.
Yeah.
John Beasley.
There was a writer or director that just passed away here that was an Oscar recipient sometime in the past. But yeah, I accept that challenge, Congressman.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on that. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class I liquor license for a Huhat Mongolian Grill located at 990 South 72nd Street is communication opposition.
This item was postponed from our May 2nd meeting. We'll have the public hearing and vote today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Caleb James. I am a regional manager for Huhat Mongolian Grill. Been with them for 15 years. I do apologize about the rescheduling. There was just a little bit of miscommunication. As everybody knows, the employment, everybody's struggling kind of these days, and we're kind of doing a little bit of restructuring with our company and kind of changing the culture and morale of management. With that being said, we had a lot of high-place people in our company that was just kind of under the, you know, thought one person was handling it versus another person, and I'll take personal blame for that. I recently took over the 72nd Pacific Huhat, which is actually our training store for our entire company throughout the Midwest. We have over 25 different stores and plan on still expanding. And the only reason this should have been just a renewal as well, we have a third-party company that handles our licenses and lets us know when everything's coming up and should be taking it on. And while we were negotiating lease prices for the building at 72nd Pacific, we were told that we were not allowed to renew our license until we knew exactly how long we'll own the property for, which I believe is incorrect at this point in time, but it did lapse. So we are coming back and asking for a brand-new liquor license.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your address for the record, too?
990 South 72nd Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Caleb, you don't have to get up.
But when I called you last Thursday, you immediately apologized for that mix-up, so I'll be glad to make a motion to support this today and look forward to being out there again. Thanks for coming in. Appreciate it. Make a motion, approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class D liquor license for Anderson Convenience Market located at 4860 South 96th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Ray Anderson, 17605 Rick Street, here representing ourselves, our family business, Anderson Convenience Market, for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Roe. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item eight, to consider a Class K catering liquor license for TNT Trucks Taps Patio located at 5402 South 108th Street.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Kevin Wyatt, 1126 Turner Boulevard, just seeking a catering license for events for trucks and taps.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Roe. I'll second. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I just had a question. I know we saw some emails going back and forth on this, but we're confident or we're okay with having the path set forward for the audit to be done? For the restaurant tax? Yeah.
It was Todd Zafon.
Okay.
He's got 15 months' worth of stuff in his computer today, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items nine through 11 can be considered together for Menard Subdivision Re-Plat 6, located northwest of 205th Street and Cumberland Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, a resolution to approve a special-use permit to allow convenience storage in the CC District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and votes on numbers nine, 10, and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates, 3552 Farnham Street. I'm here on behalf of the owner to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Nick Brenner, 5101 Menard Drive, Oakley, Wisconsin, here on behalf of Menard's, also here for any questions. I did have one other item to ask to consider is that, so we have met all the conditions of the report up to date, including the facade. I did want to ask if it would be possible to forego the CMU facade on the north and the west side of the buildings, just because they are screened from topography, existing vegetation, and new vegetation. They're not visible from the right-of-way. This is purely an ask on a business standpoint in that it would obviously save some money not having to do that, but there's really no benefit of having that facade on those sides. Obviously, we have submitted elevations with them, so if that is the decision today, we will continue to go forward with that. But I did want to ask to see if there would be some consideration for go the CMU on those two facades.
Okay. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding.
To approve as submitted today. I'm not asking for approval of the waiver, just as submitted today.
There's a motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items 12 through 15 can be considered together for Southeast 180 Maple Crossing, located southeast of 180th Street and West Maple Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone this property to AG District, MU District. Item 13, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 12 through 15 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, in this case Costco. With me today is Representative of Costco, Brian Whalen, also several representatives from Olson &amp; Associates Consulting Engineers on this particular project. I think we vetted this project out pretty well on the preliminary plat, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. I would just point out that they're looking to start construction in the late summer/fall of this year with the completion of late summer/fall of 2024. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Socrates Duffas, 3217 North 178th, 68116. We, Costco said they're moving to our neighborhood. We asked them for a few small concessions, which is not connecting. They're locked to our subdivision. We realize that once they connect, they're going to bring increased traffic to our neighborhood, which is a safety issue. That's the smallest concession we asked for, so I live three houses down from where Costco's going to be, and for the past two months, I've gone to their Dodge Street location overnight and sat there. And at night, their operations create a lot of noise at night, so that's my reason for being against this.
Okay. Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding.
I'll offer Larry, if he wants to respond to any of that.
Yes, Larry Jobin, 11440 Weston Road. We talked about this and connectivity and the requirement of connectivity with these types of commercial developments and the residential neighborhood. Traffic study was done. The level of service at all the intersections are acceptable levels of service. Most of the people, obviously, will be going out onto Emmett Street, which will be signalized at some point, and with this development, it'll become signalized and it operates very efficiently. And I think we talked about that at the preliminary plat stage. So with that, happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Just motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Items 16 and 17 can be considered together for a property located southwest of 72nd and Cass Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone property from GC District and MU District, MU District. Item 17, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 16 and 17 are today. Proponents, please.
My name is Joe Flagspire with Lampar Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, on behalf of the applicant. I know the crossroads project's been in front of this group a few times lately. This one's pretty short and sweet. Just a rezoning to pull an additional lot into the mixed-use zoning district and the amendment associated with that work. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I, in general, am against all TIF, but this specifically makes me wonder. I am against it, mainly because I don't think there's been enough transparency. We have a new name in the process now, a new face. And I've been wondering all winter, and probably before fall, as to why there was nothing happening at the crossroads. The buildings all went down, and the grading happened real fast, and then everything stopped and equipment disappeared. There weren't even people walking around over there. So I don't think, we were told enough about that as to what was going on. Obviously, some disagreements were going on, and some amendments to the agreements that had been passed even before the public found out about it, of course. That's standard for TIF and other things. Before it comes to a public hearing, it's already decided. But, you know, we're at a disadvantage because we don't hear a lot of this stuff, so we have to go digging. And we citizens might make some misassumptions or misread some things or listen to the wrong people, but it's not just my words that I quote up here. Open Sky Policy has a major influencing building right across from the State House, and they've said a lot about TIF that's rather negative, more so than what I say. I don't have enough time today to quote all that or enough copies to give out to you, but they've been pretty negative about TIF, and they say some of the things that I have implied, that this is a lot of giveaway to developers. Some of these developers are also realtors. Now, I do spend a little time digging into your attachments on the agenda items. However, I do not understand how we can continue to give away $12 million, $13 million in TIF applicable fees.
So Larry, what we have today is a zoning item, right? That was items you're referring to were last week.
This has to do with 16, because I looked it up last night, but thank you, Pete.
Yep. It's a rezoning.
I think you just need a major city special meeting to explain TIF and how people like me are wrong, how people like me are lying. Because the school districts don't get the revenue, do they? For how many years? They get the lower price, which maybe was blighted to lower the price before the agreement was done? Those are questions that imply that they need answers that are honest and transparent answers, so we don't have to lie. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, the public hearing's closed. Just let the record reflect this is a rezoning, not a tax or commitment financing item. And I would also observe there was a front-page story yesterday that explains this whole thing pretty well, for those that are interested. Second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on items 18 through 20 were held on May 2nd. Just motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero.
The public hearing's on agenda items 21 through 40 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, I understand we do have a representative here on the Sister Cities item, perhaps? Please come on down.
I'm Steve Gertis, 3514 South 94th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. I am president of the Omaha Sister City Association. I'm here to speak to the resolution that encourages moving the current status of Esigny Omaha Intercom from a friendship city to a sister city. I'd like to give the council a little bit of background as to the extensive work that has already been done. A delegation from France came here in 2019 to explore what Omaha had to offer and agreed that it made sense. And so a large delegation of Omahans in October 2019, led by Mayor Stothard, traveled to Esigny Omaha Intercom, where we signed a formal friendship agreement. We are now talking about moving from that to a sister agreement. The underlying background of this is, of course, the world significance of the events at Omaha Beach that coincidentally bears the name of Omaha and ties into a story with General Omar Bradley having a carpenter who was from Omaha, and it was the carpenter and his location that was used to signify the beach where the Americans would approach. So that's how Omaha gets connected. Emotionally, the friendship that there is between the French people and the American people is probably at its strongest in this particular area. Omaha, Esigny Omaha Intercom is an affiliation of a large number of villages, towns, small cities that are located on this Omaha Beach area. And so it's an administrative district. It's different than the type of sister-city relationships that we otherwise have, but this strong emotional attachment is incredible, and we also have a significant American-French population in Omaha. So I would urge the council to go ahead and recommend this. If you do, there will be a signing ceremony next Thursday, to which you will be invited, and a banquet celebrating the signing on Friday night, to which you would also be invited. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. And thanks for your work with the Sister Cities Association. Any other testifiers on items 21 through 40? If not, public hearings are closed. Just motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 41, a resolution to approve the contract with Western Engineering Company, Inc., for the 2023 Residential Street Resurfacing Package 1 Various Location Project is amendment of the whole request by the Public Works Department.
Public hearing and vote on number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. I would note there's an amendment of the whole. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Roe, Begley, Harding, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 42, a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with Leo A. Daily for the Omaha Police and Fire Headquarters Project.
Public hearing and vote on number 42 is today. We'll start with proponents, and I think we have a brief presentation. And then we'll go to proponents and opponents.
Good afternoon. Mike Eastman, City of Omaha, Public Works Department. I'm here speaking on the resolution for the professional service agreement for Leo A. Daily for the Omaha Police and Fire Headquarters Project. In accordance with the Omaha Municipal Code, Leo Daily was selected per section 10-180 to 10-189. October of 26, October 26 of 2022, the city engineer published the request for the proposal. November 23 of '22, the city received eight proposals from qualified firms. December 15, the A&amp;E selection team selected three firms from the eight for interviews. On January 12, 2023, the A&amp;E selection team interviewed those top three firms. January 17, Leo A. Daily was contacted on being selected for this project. February of '23, I met with Leo A. Daily multiple times to discuss their scope and fee. March of '23, they submitted their proposal, and that is now what's in front of you today for approval, is the first phase of their proposal. I'm going to go into a little summary on the professional service agreement, so to kind of summarize what that involves. The general scope of this project is dealing with the Police and Fire Headquarters Project. It also will encompass a study for a downtown police precinct, maybe part of this building, along with a fire station. So that's, we're going to look at those three entities during this whole entire process. So going from there, June of '23, the city, some city-selected people along with Leo Daily, we're going to go visit multiple police-fire headquarters buildings throughout the United States to see what works and just get some ideas. In July of '23, starts the programming process. The Public Safety Facilities Planning and Design Seminar, we're going to, Leo Daily's going to put on a seminar with the people involved to get an idea of what goes into programming something like this, to just give some people some education. Out of this programming comes the space needs, user, specified spaces, adjacencies, and we'll end up with a growth square footage for this project. Then we will look into developing site selection criteria. Then August of '23, we'll start looking at site evaluations. Then August of '23, we'll start looking at site evaluations based on those criterias from that programming portion of that. Then in October of '23, we're looking at starting the concept design. The, we're going to take two conceptual designs based on the best site that we've developed, based on the criteria we've set forth. And we will come up with two proposals along with some renderings and things like that to see what fits that site the best. There'll be bubble diagrams, elevation, engineering diagrams, and then we'll also come up with probable cost at that time. February 24, the schematic design will start. So that's the chunk, the biggest chunk of this proposal is that schematic design phase. That will take the top concept that we came up with. We'll provide architectural site plans, floor plans, building sections, exterior elevations. We'll do narratives on the interior design, fire and life safety, structural, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, fire protection, furniture test fits, and then specification index. Then April of 2024, we will complete the schematic designs and they will be available to the public. And that basically ends this phase of this proposal that's in front of you today. That schematic design final presentation basically will be, there's a drawing in the proposal that shows what it's, that's the quality of work that's going to be provided along with cost estimates on the three entities or whatever we've developed. And then that, that cost, that estimate that comes up with that, that's going to be the basis for, in 2024, it will go to the public for a bond vote. And then when the bond vote is approved, I'll give you a little, some quick history on, or some foreseeing of what's going to happen. Leo Daley in June of 2024 will end up providing the second phase of their proposal to do the construction documents and the bidding and that portion of that project. In 2020, in July of '24, we're going to kick off the design portion of this meeting, of this project. March of 2025, we will start, we'll have the documents will be completed, and then we will bid the project. And then May of '25, you can expect the general, the low bid general contractor's approval to come before you for approval for the general contractor. And then the plan is summer of 2027 for the construction to be completed. And then I'm here if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you for that overview. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
Good afternoon, Greater Omaha City Council, Mr. Frederson. Donnie Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Well, I support this for several reasons. One, in 2024, he has, he said, "We want the old police station to be turned over to African-Americans to put an embassy of the United Nations and ambassadors." And we want also to add to this purchase agreement a Fox and Hound restaurant on 72nd and Crown Point. I talked to Fox and Hound. They said they'd be happy to come to North Omaha. We ain't getting any support from the City Council. Thank you, sir.
Any other proponents on this item?
Louis T. Manis, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I also want to point out that that was a good presentation. That was a good overview. Are you?
Any other proponents on this item? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mike, I might just ask you a couple of follow-up questions.
Yes, sir.
And/or Mr. Curtis, who we engaged this morning a little bit in the Finance Committee as well. So this has been, a joint police and fire headquarters has been envisioned for many years to be located somewhere in the downtown area, realizing our current stations are quite old and have probably gone past their useful life in terms of their efficient operations to our police and fire departments. So I support that division, that vision, and I think it is important and something we do need to be looking into and we do need to accomplish for our police and fire departments and public safety, which is the most important thing that city does, right? I want folks to understand, though, as you explained, that if this is approved next week, it's just the first step, which is to assess the options, assess a new location. It's envisioned to be somewhere downtown. We don't have a site yet. And although some renderings have been produced, those are still very tentative, too. And as are any cost estimates. I think in the past or in city CIPs, it's been expressed as around $80 million, which is a major undertaking and a major expense, but still just a very rough cost estimate at this point, right?
Correct. And that rendering you were speaking to, that's just showing a quality of what's going to be provided? By no means is, at this time, does that headquarters plan on even looking like that to our knowledge. That's just a sample of what kind of quality will be provided after the schematic design phase.
And if located somewhere else in the downtown area, the current sites would be redeveloped, right? That'd be the idea for those.
That's my understanding, yes.
And then talk about the potential financing of this, too. Or maybe this is a question for Mr. Curtis, however you want to do it. So when this contract is complete, there'll be a cost estimate. And as you described, most likely a bond issue, general obligation bond issue to voters in May of 2024. I think we don't know quite yet what that cost will be or what that impact would be on our city finances. But I'm sure the effort would be to have that be a no-tax increase proposition, right?
Steve Curtis, City Finance, that's correct. I think that would be our first path. And it's a little early to know without knowing where it's going to be cited, what the cost will be, what the phasing will be, and what year it'll be. It'd be pretty hard to predict what kind of tax effect it would have. We all know we've got a fairly robust history of not raising taxes even when they've been authorized, if you look at things like the street preservation bonds. So that would certainly be our first tact.
And those bonds would have to come to the City Council to be placed on the ballot at that point, right?
That's, that's correct. They would probably be part of our normal authorization. If we have it in time to do normal authorizations other than that, then yes, it would be a special vote.
So several more items coming to the City Council on this issue. Should it move forward? And definitely requires a vote of the people.
That's correct.
Yeah. I think that's important to note. And I think it's important to have on a project this major and on such an important topic. And then as to the contract expense itself, we talked about that this morning, too. That's about 2.9 million, which was not budgeted in 2023. But we are confident, given the current status of the general fund, that that can be absorbed in the returns, revenues that you're seeing so far this year.
That's correct. For a number of different reasons, between revenue, primarily property tax valuations and a number of other things, there was enough for us to cover this under our current operations.
Thank you. Now, seeing any further lights? Next item. I'm sorry, this is the vote today, yes. Is there a motion? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 43, a resolution to approve the settlement agreement of Jane Cradup versus City of Omaha in the amount of $275,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Item 44, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the City of Bellevue for yard waste disposition services.
Public hearing on number 44 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works. I have here with me Epiphany Ramos from the City of Bellevue. I'll say a few words and I'll let Epiphany talk after I say a few words. The City of Bellevue has approached the Public Works Department regarding the processing of yard waste collected from their residents. Similar to the agreement entered last year with the City of Council Bluffs, we are seeking an interlocal agreement between Omaha and the City of Bellevue. A few key considerations in this agreement. It's a one-year agreement with a one-year extension, much like the one we did with the City of Council Bluffs. The anticipated tonnage is about 3,500 tons. That's going to be about 30% of the total that we do right now. Right now, we do about 9,000 tons from the City of Omaha. Of that, 6,000 tons are curbside residential and about 3,000 tons are dropped off at the facility. Just a couple of other things to note that the, this will not, not add any staffing to our, to process the material from Bellevue. And this is viewed as a mutually beneficial agreement and could lead to a future long-term agreement if chosen by both parties. And I'll go ahead and let Epiphany say a few words.
Thank you.
Epiphany Ramos, City of Bellevue, wastewater and solid waste superintendent. First of all, thank you so much for hearing Jim out and hearing me out today. And the City of Bellevue is really after best public policy here. This particular waste stream has been a municipally managed waste stream for historically a very long time and very successfully. The City of Omaha is doing it extremely successfully. The City of Bellevue is looking to really take on a pilot program so that we can evaluate the data that's collected during this and look for a sustainable model for the City of Bellevue. I think there has been some communication about how that may impact our current approved facility. The City of Bellevue has approved the Omaha Grove as an additional facility. And historically speaking, has been actually hauling to a transfer station into another city. So the haul is extremely far for us, and this facility is within our ETJ. It's already municipally run and well-run, and we really hope to learn something from this pilot program with the City of Omaha. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Andy Harpenow, Soil Dynamics, Gretna Sanitation and Hillside Solutions, P.O. Box 810, Gretna, Nebraska, 68028. We've been processing the City of Bellevue's yard waste for about five or six years now, and we've been doing it very successfully as well. For us, this is a direct competition. City of Omaha is directly competing with a private business. We don't understand why that would be. We, when there's a private business available to do this kind of work, it does not make sense to have a municipality handle it on top of that. We're charging, we were charging the exact same rate that the City of Omaha is charging Bellevue per ton. And so for us, we just don't understand the logic behind these interlocal agreements. City of Council Bluffs, same thing. That should have gone out for bid. That should have been allowed for a private business to potentially process those wastes. We're more, we're efficient. We've done a good job for the City of Bellevue. And quite frankly, it just doesn't make sense that the City of Omaha is trying to take over more of this composting material. So we're trying to partner with the city on your climate action plan. But then here we are, we're getting hamstrung on about $120,000 worth of revenue per year. And for a small business like ours, that's substantial. So we'd ask that you vote no against this interlocal agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. Jim, would you mind coming up? I know you and I had had some conversations about this, too. And if you'd like to talk about the reason for the interlocal versus bid, maybe that's one area to respond to Mr. Harpenow's question, as well as any other, some of the other issues raised.
Sure. So, and I can let Epiphany expand on the issues raised as to why Bellevue is making, came to us.
Right.
Okay, so I would like to say that we're not trying to take over anything. Okay, we're just working with another municipality to came, came to us. We do these agreements all the time. It's a good governments working together as government entities in the best interest of the taxpayers. And that's, this is a mutual benefit for both parties. We'll get some additional revenue at our facility without taking on additional staff. And Bellevue is going to not pay $120,000. They'll pay a little bit less than that to the City of Omaha. So it's beneficial for both parties. I think Epiphany has raised some concerns about wanting to work with our, I'll let her expand on that. She wants to work with the City of Omaha because she wants to work with our facility at Omaha Grove.
Yeah, so the way.
I'm sorry, you'll have to give your name.
Sorry, Epiphany Ramos, City of Bellevue, wastewater and solid waste superintendent. So the waste stream for Bellevue is not five years old. It's been around before I was born. And it wasn't something that I really wanted to bring up to the council, but unfortunately, there has been some regulatory concerns. And we also are looking at a sustainable model that's local. The trucking of our yard waste for compostable purposes out to Gretna, utilizing a transfer station is unfortunately not the best sustainable model. Looking at best public policy and working with the City of Omaha on a really best-in-class operations model that they have there is what we would prefer to do. I can answer any other questions, but essentially, it's, there's no competition here. It's not really about competition. That particular facility has been the only MRF for this particular waste stream. So unfortunately, it's kind of been more of a monopoly. And Bellevue believes that this, this public policy and this program in a pilot notion will give us the opportunity to look at actually creating a better model for Bellevue.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, maybe one question for you, too. So I think this proposed contract, which has a vote next week, is for the rest of this year and could be extended for another year?
Yeah, and we, like, we modeled it much like we did for the City of Council Bluffs. They were doing it for different reasons. And Bellevue is looking at this as to where, they're looking for different alternatives to what they have now. So this is a one-year agreement with a one-year extension so that they can understand if this is the agreement they want to enter into potentially on a longer term.
And the City of Omaha is obviously committed in the long term to our composting operation, even though it's possible it could change locations.
Yeah, and we have identified a location. The city owns property down near 60th and Harrison. And actually, we own some additional property with a road relocation that was done down there. So we have established a site layout that would fit at that location. We don't have final plans or anything to move there yet, but we have a site layout and plans and a cost estimate to move from our current location at our Pillion Creek wastewater facility, which is going under a planned expansion in a few years. And that's why we have to move off that current location.
Okay. And if there was a transition in location, no issues with our current obligations under our waste contract, nor the commitment to do more with potentially Bellevue and Council Bluffs, right?
No, absolutely not. So with Bellevue, their hauler will be bringing the material. It will have no impact on our hauling contract. Our, so this contract has nothing to do, this work with Bellevue has nothing to do with FCC. The move of our compost facility, as long as it's located within a current distance from the current facility, and this one will actually be closer, that everything will stay at the same price with our hauler.
All right.
Okay.
And that's to be determined, so it could be two or three years out at least, right?
We're looking, we're looking a couple of years out. We're actually reevaluating the timing of the work down at the Papio. And so we're a couple of years out probably with that.
All right. Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
Non-action items, items 45 through 51, do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 2:40. Motion passed five to zero, meeting is adjourned at two forty-nine.